We don't normally have this kind of excitement to start our meeting.
Okay. Should be good.
Welcome everyone to the February 20th financing facilities meeting. Mr. Marta, will you call it over?
Mrs. Maureen.
Here.
Mrs. Coates.
Here.
Mr. Miami.
Here.
Mrs. Dimmerling.
Here.
And Mrs. Horn.
Here.
So we'll have, we have two main items on our agenda tonight and the first is an update on our facilities projects. And I'll turn it over to Mr. Hetzel.
Thank you very much, Mrs. Maureen. We wanted to start, Mike and I talked about tonight's meeting. We are transitioning into our phase two project portfolio from multiple projects, our elementary's, athletic complex, middle school east, into now just a high school focus. And so we thought we would start introducing you more closely to the high school. And we thought a good way to orient ourselves to the site is to kind of drill down onto these floor plans as they're diagrammed out. So when we schedule and the work is performed on site and where our learning spaces are going to be, they're identified in these plans. So as we prepare for our poor schedule for concrete, which Mike's going to walk you through, we thought you would show, we would show you that footprint of kind of the areas, these are our prides or learning spaces, area E, F, and H. And then there's area J and D for some of our office spaces. And he's going to walk us through that and then you can see a key below. And so as we begin to talk about work, we'll start bringing in some of these diagrams to get a feel for not just this enormous amount of steel out of the ground over there, but what it, what it looks like and what it means.
Like Mr. Hetzel, so on the left, left side of each of the pictures, the floor plans demonstrates by the slash lines, the slab on deck on levels two and three that have been completed. So right now, everything on two and three in D, G, and J, which is the, the areas on the left that are shown are completed. So right now what we're working, we're transitioning into area H, following the ironworkers who have completed the steel erection in H, E, and F. So not to throw a bunch at you, but just working from the bottom of the screen, area H, and then area E, and then F. Area H with having the most completed phase of work, scope of work with the metal decking. They're working from the top down as, you know, I explained, you know, in previous weeks or previous month, rather, I'm sorry. Working on the roof joists, the bar joists, and then the structural steel on one and two is actually the support for the decking. So following the decking, we go in and we, we follow those scopes of work with the, with the slab on deck. So things are progressing well. It's fair to say, you know, as, as we talk and we get excited, you know, we see a bunch of steel and in the coming weeks, we're going to see precast plank for the exterior facade. I'm bouncing around here a little bit, but it's, you know, I come to realize we can be excited about this, you know, the, the progress. But it, you know, I brought two schedules with me today. Fortunately, I can say that we're on schedule. I wish, you know, I wish I could say that we're ahead of schedule, but with an aggressive schedule that we have and an aggressive move in date that we have, this is exactly where we want to be. And I think that's fair, you know, for the community and, you know, the board of education to kind of, you know, understand, you know, I get excited here and I talk with passion. We got steel, you know, we're, concrete slab on decks, two and three are done. We've got, you know, the, the bar joists for the roof are going well. That's exactly what we need. That's what you need me, you know, that's what you need me to say, that's what you want to hear. So we are on pace, we're on track, we are on schedule, so.
Is there anything at this point that could put us ahead of schedule, like May isn't as rainy as it normally is and that would help? Or is it, is it, that doesn't matter at this point anymore?
No, I mean, we have taken in consideration, so we're given accumulative rain days, weather days. We keep track of that in every one of our meetings. We have OEC meetings with the contractor, Rusili, every, every week. And we're, we're keeping track of those.
Oh, I know you guys are working as well. I'm just like, is there anything that could go in our favor for?
If it was going, you know, like May, if it's going to be a rainy May, believe it or not, historic data provides seven rain days for May or snowy February, it gives us eight inclement weather days. So we need it to not rain a lot, any greater than, you know, the allocated days. And we just stay on pace. They're doing a great job and I didn't mean to cut you off, you don't want to say something, I'm sorry.
No, I was, I think the same thing, what we were saying is they build in weather days. And so that, that creates that little bit of slack for those conditions. But unless it's a very, very different condition, it's going to give us a little bit of leeway here or there. But to make a material impact of months would probably be very difficult because of all the factors that contribute to building it.
That makes sense.
Yeah.
Thanks.
Well, and we are excited, it's on schedule.
Yeah, yeah.
Right.
Record cold with the ice and the snow and we know how hard you're working on it. Being on schedule, we're excited about that.
Yeah, this is just me being greedy.
No, and I, I totally understand that and that's, I want those questions. I want those questions. Because it, you know, it is, it's, because I say this to myself walking up here, you know, I get so, and I started to repeat myself, but so passionate about talking about the project, I don't want the takeaway to be, you know, we're ahead of schedule and things are so, you know, things are exactly where they need to be. And the warm weather is, you know, we've been blessed with, it's exactly what we need to be, you know, to, to see. We've got 95 guys on site today. And I think it's worth mentioning also, and I open on jinx, knock on wood, 370 safe workdays on that, on our site. So that's, I mean, that's worth celebrating.
Yeah, it is.
On schedule, we're celebrating, you know, all the things that we want to talk about. So we are, there you go, thank you. We've been working together too long, you read my mind. So this is, you know, the picture one is just, you know, that was last month's project progress. So that's the steel erection, the one D, G, J. So right now, area F and area H and area E and F that I showed, you know, we had on the picture, that's all done now. That's, 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 that's filling in everything that you see in that picture, picture number one. I mean, that's, that's.
It's really fast.
That's immense project, uh, progress. Number two, just, you know, I'm there when they, when they're pouring the slabs, I'm there when they're, you know, when they're finishing up. So I'm just trying to capture that progress. It's, that's a second floor, area D, slab on deck. And then number three is, that's just, you know, trying to show this is what it looks like when, you know, when the guys are finished. You know, the, the, the power trowels are removed from the slab and you've got that nice shiny slab on deck finish. Number four, looking at area J and H, the structural steel. So that's actually where we're going to be moving next with the slab on deck.
It's amazing.
It is, it's, it's going, it's going so well. And then that's from a roof level, looking out over areas H, E, and J, you know, the, the circular areas of the building. And then number two, this, this work is actually, has started in the last day. It's that tarps in blue are the roof installation. That's being placed in area D on the second level. So it was good to have that up there, have it ready, the roof membrane materials on the ground, it's ready, it's on site. The roof edge blocking is being installed, that's, roofer started that on Friday. So everything is just, you know, I say his name every month, but I'm not going to, you know, fail to mention again, Phil, Phil Miller's their, their general project superintendent. And this guy just, I mean, it's like a fire drill every day, you know, just everybody has a place to be and you better be putting out the fires. And it's, it's pretty cool to watch, it's very, I'm honored to be a part of it, it's, it's going well. Number three, we talked about the, you know, all the work on the first floor level, all the underground plumbing, all the underground ditches for low voltage wiring and electric. So that is, that's moving from north to south in area D. So next month we'll be showing pictures of slab on grade, not slab on deck. Where this work is now being completed, it's inspected, we've covered it up and we're going to start prepping it for slab on grade. And what we'll do is we'll, we'll hit those if we hit a pad, you know, if it rains, we miss a pour on one of the slab on decks because the water drips down through the decking, we'll go down to area D where we've got two levels of concrete decking. It's not going to drip through. So the fourth is just, you know, we're trying to capture the best of the aerial photos to show progress. And as I said before, you know, just kind of picture that circle with the structural steel, that is now complete. It's, it is in operation, it's in progress. But for the most part, it's, I'd say it's 90% complete. So then they'll come back and start, you know, putting the decking down for the roof and let's, you know, let the roofers just kind of follow suit and get this thing dried in. One of the things that we don't have, and I just, cut me off if I start talking too much. But we've started the exterior framing that I talked about last month, that's what I wanted to bring it up. Exterior framing and the sheeting, it's dimmance class material. So you can see that on the stadium side of the building. So you can see the windows, the cutouts, so I will definitely, I told him last week, I'm excited about next month's meeting already because it's so much going on. But.
So when will the steel workers be totally done?
Oh.
That's true, that's true.
June.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's safe to say, because what they're going to do, what they'll do is they'll, they'll move from the north area into the, into the south.
Yeah.
Start working on that area, getting ready for the precast now, follow them.
That will be as easy to see from the road.
No.
As the, as the north end and the circles are.
Yeah.
So that will be.
In our meeting today, we discussed that this site that we're working with Mifflin Township on there, the connection of Hamilton and Carpenter there. That's going to go live on March 4th, so we'll have contractors parking there on site. We have so many on site, so that's going to be a nice overflow for them. So they have reasonable access to the site, not get in the way of all of our operations on the school site. But it's getting that busy and having that many people on the site, so it's been very helpful to do that. We wanted to show you this slide because what we thought was some exciting things were, that is a picture of a robot. I don't know if it has a name or not, but they load BIM information from an iPad into this robot and it's a printer. And so all of the modeling that needs to happen as far as interior layout and partition, soffits and those types of things, it actually runs on the poured concrete and marks everything for the next work that needs to be done. And in the past that was done, and even by many construction companies now, it's manually done and it takes days. And what this does is it expedites the process with greater accuracy. And so Rusili is invested in this tool, we're, we're the beneficiary of that. Again, that helps speed things along because when that's done quickly and accurately, again, that helps everything else that we have to deal with. So we thought that would be a neat thing to show you that's going on there. And I know that they're proud of some of the innovations that they're providing to their clients.
When did they first start using, I'm just curious?
In the industry?
Yeah.
About five years ago.
So we, but Rusili, I think, has brought it onboard more recently than that. So they probably weren't the first adopter, but it's an investment and, you know, it takes time to understand how to use it and then apply it properly. So I think that's been a very helpful tool for us.
Saves your back and your knees, a lot of work.
Oh, yeah. And then we do have a senior at Gannon Lincoln High School who's doing capstone work there on the site. I don't know if, if you know Joey or not, I had a chance to meet him. He's going to participate in the wall mockup, so we're going to build the wall. We'll see all the materials and the window and everything like that. And they'll, they'll display that so everybody can understand what the appropriate layers are and materials are and how, what the expectations are for how they're going to be performing the work. And Joey's going to participate in that. And then it's my, my understanding, he'll be going to Bowling Green to major in civil engineering, so. It's good stuff.
That's really neat.
I love that we've been giving the students access and collaborative participation in the project. That's like the icing on the cake for.
I think it's such an amazing opportunity to actually slow down. I know we get busy, I know we have work to do, but like you said, what a unique opportunity, you know, we don't do these things very often. So when a student has an opportunity like that, it's, it's fantastic.
Thank you for making the time for this meeting.
And Bill and Phil on the site and Frank from Rusili have been wonderful and spending time with our students and making sure that they have the access they need to learn things thoroughly, so that's been good.
Yeah, they came to the open house of the east, which was great.
Yes, yes.
Phil, Frank and Phil.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It was great talking with them.
Onto the next section, which is about our change order activity. So as, as we've talked about before, we have tried to manage the project from a financial perspective with tracking the kind of activity that occurs that have an impact on our, our financial performance. And again, those four core categories are, an owner request is something that we're asking them to do on the site that's different from what we had originally planned. Existing conditions are the types of things that may be environmental or soil related. Like we said, we had water running underneath the foundation that we've had to deal with and remediate a couple of times. Co-re requirements, you know, as the city or fire marshal walk through, they might say, you know, we, we would like things to be arranged this way or, or systems to perform a certain way that we might need to accommodate access to hydrants or power, different things like that. And then design development is, basically it's about the handoff from the design to the contractor. And whether or not that was clear enough or whether or not that there needed to be more, more done to complete that work. And I think Mike had mentioned before that, you know, we typically try to shoot four, five to seven percent, even though we want to beat it. And we were able to outperform that on the middle school east project and currently are tracking at 1.36 at the high school. We are only, you know, heading into 20% done, but we, we like where we are right now. This, this month, we did have a big change order coming out of the gates. There was some adjustments to concrete. And so several factors impacted that, but as we sorted through it, I think we needed to progress that way with the design. In some areas we changed from block to concrete. And then there's also been a price hike since the original estimates were put together in those materials. And then the scope expanded just a little bit.
What were the reasons for the changes besides the price hike?
So some of the design included CMU or masonry block to build a wall. It's particularly, I think, between the bleachers and the building. And after further review, the, this structural steel engineer said that needs to be concrete, you know, just based upon all the stress evaluations. And so made the recommendation to change it to that. So that was something that we then adjusted to.
And is that just something that you can't tell ahead of time, it's like you make your best kind of projections ahead and then once you're on site, you have a better?
When the documents came out, you know, it was assumed that block, I mean, we look at how many schools, you know, we do in block, masonry. Senior engineer looked at it and said, you know, it's, that's not going to work. It needs to be concrete reinforced and it's steel. So just, it's a, you know, it's something, it's, if you're going to live in this building for 55, 60 years, you're better off every day with the concrete instead of masonry. So that's what it boils down to, just the stress.
Is that that area where it's going to go over to the bleachers? No?
No, no, it's more the theater performing arts.
Theater side, okay.
And it's, honestly, it's, it's throughout the building, but the majority of the area is performing arts.
So how much was that change order?
That individual change order was about 606. And then there was a few other design related change orders to equate to 66. Currently this month, we are looking much better than that, so that's good.
Yeah.
We'll stay on top of it. This is our, our financial, our master budget for all of the projects. And we'll continue to condense them also, the far right column are now our completed projects listed there. And you can see we're 97% paid on that, which, you know, represents substantial completion. And then we have budgets set aside for the work that we have to do to move maintenance and central office, demo that site and then move our central office to its new location as well as the maintenance building. And then the focus there in blue is the high school stadium project. In total, you can see in the gray column on down through that the percent paid on everything is 34% right now, almost 20% on the high school. And so we're tracking pretty well with that. And then below, we've just been keeping an eye on the spend, actually for two reasons. One is we just, when you issue your bonds, you need to move the money within a reasonable timeframe or at least demonstrate reasonable progress, which we've been able to do, we meet with legal counsel and bond counsel on that regularly. We'd like it to be a little bit higher, but we're doing okay and it's satisfactory. And then David and I recently had a conversation just about looking at our draw schedule to say opportunity for any further investment earnings would be helpful to the project. So Keith's going to take a look at that, we might get on a call with Luttrell next week, so.
Good, good.
Yeah, and just, we have a lot coming due in the next two or three months, so it's a good time to make sure we.
We have a plan.
With the feds messing around and nobody knowing what the feds are going to do, see what's best.
Great opportunities, yeah.
We'll at least be liquid and have the ability to make decisions and move if we want to.
Right.
So now the little yellow band is our in-house work. So the blue band around, frame around the pictures has been for the construction projects. Every once in a while we slide in the yellow frame and that is to represent what we do from an operations perspective. So a lot of what you're going to see here is related to our operations department facilities, where permanent improvement funds, technology, repair, replacement, refurbishment, things like that. What we've done is identify just basic target areas where the work would be performed. So in the upper left is a site improvement box, you know, some of the highlights there involve the ADA work and the approach and bus loop at High Point Elementary. This is the last step on that project. And when we perform the work there, it disturbed the sidewalk and the city said, you know, when we replace it, it needs to meet new ADA code. So in doing that, we're also going to take the opportunity to try to fix that bus loop, not just clean it up. But if you ever watched dismissal, you would see buses coming very close, if not hitting the road on the way out of that loop. It's so steep. So we're going to try to level that out and then put a top coat on it and fix the ADA and then that building is done. We're also going to be looking at a parking lot and loop at Royal Manor. And we think that could be very helpful there and perhaps be kind of set up a gear garden opportunity and some other things as we develop that site. So we're pretty excited about that. Building improvements, you know, some of these sections are also driven by building discussions with the principals, work order activity, obvious repair, replacement needs that, that arise throughout the course of the year. So you'll see there at the very top of that is, we're going to put a rooftop unit on top of the gym at Royal Manor. And it has not had air conditioning in that gym ever, so we're planning to have some air conditioning on top of that. You'll see a couple of preschool improvements where we're expanding classroom space here at Clark Hall because preschool continues to grow. So we're dividing some of the larger spaces into two so that they have different work areas for students. And then just other things like roof maintenance programs and some, I think Tracy has talked about this a little bit too. Kind of this idea of beautification of our sites, investing a little bit in curb appeal and cleanliness and organization. So we want things to look clean and organized when you have consistent. And we're looking at putting awnings at the main entrance like we have on some of them and kind of create some uniformity there. So when people come in and wave, there's, there's a little bit of protection from the weather, but also it presents a little bit nicer as well. In the technology section, if anybody knows Matt Blackwell and his team, they're 24/7, 365. They're always doing things to support what we need for our students. And they have identified a, a number of projects. Much of this stuff works through E-rate, so if we can get funding, federal funding or discounts of roughly 50%, we do that. But we still need to fund some of it from our own dollars. And this represents switch upgrades and cabling infrastructure we need for a wifi improvement throughout the district. We're also going to do full classroom upgrades at Jefferson Elementary and Chapelfield Elementary. So that is, that is planned and prepared for by his team. At the bottom, you all see, so you also see those large grants. We talked about them last fiscal year, but for our two-way radio interoperability network, that is in motion. We're hoping to have that done by early summer. So that is still in motion. And then our large camera security access control improvement project is, is a really lengthy one. And that's that over million dollar grant. And so that's already been in motion, we're finalizing phase two of that process right now. The yellow box is ESER and that represents the federal funding opportunity that, that are many, most, all schools were provided. And we're looking to improve some of the envelope needs that, you know, windows, doors, roof repairs, those mechanicals, those are indoor air quality aspects to our environment that are approved via ESER. We're also going to put three buses on there as qualifying expenses and that'll be on Thursday's board agenda, so. Also what we would call small projects or equipment needs, we're going to do a couple of combi oven improvements at our elementaries and those will come out of food service funds, boiler repairs, particularly at the high school, we're trying to keep that system going, you know, before we enter the new one. So we've had that inspected and we're going to try to schedule some repairs on that to make sure that that's, that's in good standing. We have hired a company to come and evaluate some of the pre-existing playground equipment that was at High Point Elementary that was removed to see if that can be reinstalled and they're, they're coming this week to, to see what they can do with all the pieces that we have. And they have the catalogs and, and if they're missing parts, they're going to try to put some of that back in place. And we worked with our PTO on that a little bit. And, and then the central office and the maintenance move, building moves. The abatement has been awarded and booked for the first week of June. The demolition will then happen from mid-June to mid-July. And then we'll, we'll put a paving grade on it and we'll stripe it so they can have a parking lot. And then in the meantime, we'll be going over to our new location. And we thought, Dr. Eagle and I talked about, maybe next month, we'll maybe show some of what those sites look like so people can be oriented with where we're going to be. Athletics.
Before you moved up, like, remind me, how many parking spaces will it allow with the central office demolition?
I, I think the way that we're laying it out, we're hoping that we can get maybe over 150 more to 180. But I think we'll have to, we'll have to map it out. But I think we'll have to, we'll have to map it out again once we get there. But I think depend upon how they do it, and then we're going to consider the logistics and what kind of staging needs. But for sure, one hundred, but if we can get up to one-seventy-five or so, we're gonna try to do that.
That's awesome. Thank you.
And I think that really will stabilize that. You know, it's actually gone pretty well this year. I know that Steve King's been kind of coordinating all that, and he's done an amazing job. And we haven't really had a lot of challenges associated with some of the remote spots that we've had. But then I think bringing more of that onsite with event activities and other things like that will make it much better next year. Athletics then will be, and I have some information in a further slide. We have plans to refinish the floor. We're basically gonna do a makeover of the Middle School West gym. And then I'll highlight some of those activities in that slideshow. So the right side of that summary is just a couple of tables. As much as we quantify the areas that we're working in, we also work out of many different types of funds. So we always wanna make sure we're identifying that. That gives us an easy look at, when our staff is looking at our budgets, they can see if that amount is available there to make sure that we're lining all of that right and don't get into financial challenges there.
I guess I have a question. We have six hundred and fifty, I was just looking at the variance before. We have a million and three forecasted, and we've spent five hundred and fifty-six. So is that gonna bring us close? No, they have some other things coming from there, okay.
Yes. I know that right now in our budget accounts, we have that available from the original budget, which involves anticipation of revenues posted. So I know that the cash and the, I guess I would look at it as I'm using accrual versus the cash to plan this out. And a lot of this, we won't even pay until probably the end of the fiscal year, maybe even in August when the work's completed, so.
Yeah. I just know we left, we didn't use Coach Shade's money last fiscal year, and we don't want to let that happen again, right?
From my perspective and understanding, and David, I can, we can look at it more closely. We're running right up to the wall on this, you know. So I think we are spending every drop that we see in our accounts right now. If we can find more, I think we have more things we can find to do, so.
Okay.
Yep. To kind of broaden, cut a step back out of the financial tables. And I think in our finance and facility committee meeting, we've talked about trying to present the work and kind of quantify it a little bit so we can begin to track it. So last year I was here, you know, we rolled in with some projects that we began to manage. This year, we're starting to track them so that now we can begin to look at what we've been doing in-house as far as performance goes, and then how that's feeding into future activities. And then building out a plan that I think we would, Dr. Deagle and I will work on to share with you of what we see as kind of building needs and facility improvements that are coming up based on life expectancy and things like that, so that we can have longer-term plans, discussions with the board about those things, so. One of the items that I wanted to present was, I've been approached by Coach Shade and the Baseball Boosters about a hitting facility concept. And in doing that, it was something that was considered for the Black Lake Athletics complex, but not able to be completed as of yet. And so they have been working to try to generate revenue and in-kind help and things like that to present something to the board where they could propose getting this kind of a project off the ground. In doing that and working together, we discussed what that building might look like. So it would accommodate baseball and softball, but also can it accommodate soccer and lacrosse? Can it provide resources for them? Can it provide restroom resources? And can it provide, from a district perspective, some storage or maintenance type of capacity so that some of our larger ground equipment and things like that, that they may actually use on that site, could be stored there so that we don't haul them all over the district while we're in transition with our maintenance building? So I presented it to you because recently I've gotten pretty firm numbers from Coach about what he thinks this building might cost and where they are with it. And they would like to, the idea to be presented to you with the idea of them being able to come up with funding of over about three hundred thousand dollars and with an interest in us kind of trying to match something like that. So in doing that, I think I wanted to share that with you, and we could discuss more information if needed. The strengths of it are it's a resource that could help that site and ultimately would probably be a need that we have. I think it would be probably at a price less than what it would have been within the construction package. So this is pulled out, worked from aside with a little more capacity for the things that we wanna do. But the downside of it is those dollars that we would invest in this would prevent us from investing something else that the district needs. And so how that fits into our priority bucket is probably something that, you know, we should consider. But just wanting to kind of really kind of present it to you with the idea that I think if we were to consider moving forward with it, we would need to evaluate what the legal requirements would be. This isn't a school building. We don't have to follow a higher vice code statute. There is a way to make that arrangement. Rickard Grayden, our legal counsel, could research that and determine what that handoff that could occur would look like. And then also verifying with Jefferson Township that this would be acceptable on that site because of the permitting zoning associated with that. So that is what I wanted to kind of bring information forward to the board on.
Where do they currently go for their hitting facility? They don't have, they do not have.
We're probably the only one in our league.
Or maybe only.
That don't have one.
Right.
Of our size, of our size of school.
Right. And then when we look at our current facilities, maybe you already know the answer to that. Like who, what sport have we not supported? And then, does that make sense in my answer to that question?
You have a very good question. I, I, I had this conversation.
Like the baseball, softball, kind of the outlier, have we really talked about everybody else in this? Same except for them, or are we missing?
Well, swimming and bowling. And hockey would be three.
But those are probably not, I mean, those are very outlaw, like as in like, I don't think many districts have their own board or bowling alley.
Right. Hockey right now.
I think districts our size, pardon me Tracy, do you know, it seems like at least the districts I know that are close to our size have their own pool.
I only know New Albany.
Well, Arlington.
Yeah.
Not very many.
I think, yeah.
I think Worthington does as well. They had an auditorium years ago. I thought it might be part of their new project, but Hilliard doesn't, didn't have one. So, you know, I think it all, and it might be a priority for that community of what, you know, how active they are.
But that's first one.
Right.
I know swim has challenges with, I mean, they worked with Jefferson to build the, out of their funds, have the dome put on because of challenges with scheduling with the law.
Oh, right.
So to your question, I think their swim feels like an outlier for sure, based on other facilities they've seen.
Yeah, that's a whole nother question in my alley though. Like, that's really big versus like a hitting field. I mean, when you're talking about.
An auditorium is very expensive.
That's a very, like, I don't know how, I understand they're both sports, but I don't know. Having been a retired lifeguard, I don't know how to put them in the same category. They seem very different to me.
The cost.
And we're talking about cost and just liability.
Liability.
I think is what seems hugely vastly different to me.
Well, maintenance too, yeah.
Yeah, I would say baseball has funded most of their field improvements in their current building themselves.
Themselves.
So the district has really had minimal investment in baseball. And softball, I would say, it's always been the bottom rung. I mean, even at our old fields that were displaced.
And now we do have a new varsity and JV softball field and a new concession building for softball. It's beautiful.
So what I, the attribute that I like best about this concept is that for soccer, lacrosse, whoever is out there, if severe weather comes, instead of telling to get in their cars, we can use this as a shelter, right? Like that's, in tennis, there's just no place.
They'd go to the school.
They'd have to go to the elementary school, but that's.
No, there's another building, Cooley would go there for soccer. It's still far away based on with the new area that we've done with Black Lake. But it's the, it's some kind of locker facility that's behind the whole baseball, because that's where they would go. It's like a.
That's the baseball.
Well, it's like a shipping.
It's the concession, the concession.
It's their concession building.
Yeah, it's their concession.
And we have a softball concession building.
That's where they would go for any kind of weather, but it's still far.
Yeah, so this would be half the distance right there.
And the shared communal space is a nice feel.
For softball, baseball.
Like that they're sharing and working together and.
Yeah.
Well, for the first time in a long time, they'll be in the same proximity. Because baseball was always out at Black Lake, softball was behind the high school.
With no amenities.
Right.
Portageons.
Right.
Yeah, I like the idea that there's restrooms.
Yeah, that's what I was gonna say, we currently don't have bathrooms out there.
We just have, we have portageons by the athletic fields, and then we have just a couple like in the concession building.
For baseball, like baseball, and now in softball.
And now in softball and in baseball, but it's limited. So we have, we have portageons out there.
But we have the facility to easily tap into that. That's not a whole nother conversation.
No, it might be, it's already existing.
So when we had to value engineer, because this building was originally in the plants. And, and when, the one thing that the board said is, well, at least take the pipes.
The underground utilities.
Underground utilities. And prepare the land, because we were moving the land, right? Anyway, to create for the, what was added, do that so that that isn't a huge cost down the road.
Cost to do this.
Later on, yeah.
Because you can, it was just kind of part of the project then. So that piece should be ready.
Okay, well, that's good, and that's huge, because otherwise that's a big step.
Yeah.
So I love that the boosters, I mean, I appreciate the boosters raising, or they will be raising the money that they're gonna provide, shows how much they want this facility. And I like the shared space, I love the restrooms. So for our investment in it, what is not gonna happen to make this happen? And is there any risk to what's not gonna happen? Or is that something that's planned, could easily be planned down the road? I just wanted to understand the whole picture.
Right, and I think that's what, you know, when we look at that, we think the kinds of things that might get pushed back. Obviously, we go, you know, safety, warm, dry, kinds of needs that we have. So something like buses, something like paving improvements, something like those types of things get pushed back. So instead of buying some of the buses that we probably want to buy next year, that might get pushed back another year. Or all this new paving that we've done that we need to seal coat so it doesn't crack and then freeze and then break apart, we don't do. You know, I think it just kind of just chips away at some of those things. And that's what we've gotta try to manage as best we can with that.
So for those things, would you categorize them as like low-risk, medium-risk, high-risk of not doing those to fund this?
Or is that another analysis that's, will take time or not?
Yeah, I think that, I mean, I think that we're going to evaluate like the five-year plan from today forward. But, you know, there's a, there's a moderate risk that something would get shifted. I know that we've had discussions about Middle School West roof, and that work is significant. Part of this budget, I'm going to do an evaluation of the roof because it has solar panels and it's extensive. But that's an enormous project that we're trying to get our hands around to understand when we think we could do that. But this amount of money disrupts things like a parking lot section or three buses that we, two or three buses that we need. Those are things that kind of stand out, maybe finishes in a building that we might want to, classroom improvements, technology improvements in those areas, we might not be able to complete. But I think that Dion's right in that we can also kind of take a look at this and try to map it out and as we present to everybody, see if we're missing things. Because how I collect information isn't the same. You know, we don't, it's hard to get it all in one place. So to get a broader perspective on what we think we wanna do in the district would be very, very helpful.
How many buses have we purchased, did you say?
I think we, after Thursday, I think we will have acquired sixteen buses in the last like year and a half.
So that's what I meant by low medium and high risk. If we, like, would you categorize us not getting a bus, low risk because we've already purchased sixteen? So that's kind of what my question was.
I think we have twenty that we needed to turn, right?
Yeah, yeah, we're getting very, very close to that.
We also need to remember that phase one monies went to every building but the high school and any high school-related entity, right? So all of the rooms, all of the furniture and all of the K through eight classrooms have all been refurbished in the last four years, right? So phase one dollars were dedicated to that, with the exception of, I think we carved out a half million dollars or something to do the pre-work for the high school, right? So phase two is the bulk of the high school piece, right? So.
So our next steps, then, as we're looking at the legal and Jefferson Township, then you're gonna look at risks of other stuff not getting done because it could be low-risk, and then this would be worth the investment because, or you're not seeing a risk to other stuff.
And I think we could present that to the board for you to review, but I think you're right. We could kind of create a risk analysis of that. And I think also re-engaging Coach Shade and the booster to say, you know, how are things looking from a funding perspective? And then once we determine what a legal arrangement would need to be in order for anybody to move on it, you know, whether it's this fiscal year or next fiscal year, you know, depends upon the timing of those types of things. I think that could be helpful information for us too, to see if we could get.
What, what is the timeline for that? Because in order to do anything this summer, right, we would need to know within the next month.
Yeah.
And make a call, I mean, I mean, just to kind of put it in perspective, timing-wise on whether it's doable. So you said we have to talk to the attorneys, we have to talk to the boosters, but are we talking, you know, next month's meeting? That we would really be coming back, and you've done your assessment as well, just to kind of.
Well, I could do, have an assessment done by that then. And I think definitely a draft of legal arrangement could be done by then for sure, for us to understand what it might look like and what the components of the project include for it to be something that they can perform and then we can pick up and finish and it be compliant with everything we need to do.
And do we have a team? Like you mentioned, it's not a school, part of the school funded project. So as far as workers, would that entail getting bids and all that? Or do we have a team kind of already in mind?
Yeah, so the, so the idea behind this, this is a prefabricated building, which is, was kind of the concept before. So there, it's like a modular system structure. So these system builders can come in, and Coach Shade and the boosters have worked with, they have volunteers and they have parents and things involved that have electrical background. So involvement with an electrical contractor, plumbing contractor, and then engaging a builder to do this with a design professional. That is something that their team has done. We could always, you know, put a condition that we need to review everything, you know, the final drawing of everything. And I'm sure that with, you know, with. And I'm sure that with, you know, with Turner and, and Rusili here too, we could, you know, just test that, what that would look like pretty easily.
That's great, civic engagement, that's awesome.
Yeah, yeah, and so then if they, if they're able to provide at least that, that shell or whatever that is, then can we accept that as a donation? And then can we do finish work to make it a function set?
Wow, nice.
And then last question, I think. I'm assuming, but, but wanna make sure my assumptions are correct, that like operating costs of this ongoing would be on the district. And I would assume minimal and work into the five-year plan or no concern of working it into that five-year plan?
I think it's like many of the buildings that we have, it probably wouldn't be that much different than adding a VAB or some of the other things that we do, because it won't be occupied during the day. You know, it could, it could run pretty good over the summer and things like that if people are going in there. But I think definitely manageable compared to kind of the, our consumption rate of electricity in the district. With the school buildings consume a lot of electricity. So I think it would just be a modest kick, kind of, I mean, similar to some of the other. We, we rent warehouse space that has utilities tied to it and things like that. So I think it would be, it would be absorbed in there and probably not noticeable. But I think what I could do, we could generate an estimate to show you, this is what we spend in electricity, for example. And this is what this looks like.
I just wanted to make sure my assumption was correct, that we're not seeing it as a concern or ongoing.
I don't think so.
It's not heated, right? Or air conditioned?
I don't, I'm not sure exactly what they proposed on that, but they may wanna use it in the, in the winter. So it might be unit ventilators or some of those smaller kind of control units that.
Ones that the directional, right, versus the whole place?
Depends on what their needs are and what their, what their plans are. Baseball teams wanna get started in, you know, February, so they need an heated space.
Good follow-up questions.
I've been in all the TNGs that they have.
Yeah, we were in that one, you know, in the playoffs.
Doors is heated, the whole of TNG one?
Yeah.
Did you have another question?
Yeah.
Okay, alright. Another project.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you. Another project that we wanted to highlight was refinishing, refurbishing the Middle School West basketball court. Dwayne Hawke, our operations manager, myself, worked with Garrett, our athletic, real school athletic director. And Kiev, the principal at Middle School West. And we walked that floor and they were originally talking about refinishing it. And then we really looked into it and we thought, well, our understanding is this court has one feet from the three-point line to out of bounds line. So a lot of kids don't get to shoot the corner three, which is a big deal in basketball. And if we're gonna reface it, maybe we can have the opportunity to clean it up and make it an overall improvement for use. I think they're limited in being able to host tournaments and things like that. So we were able to talk to the contractor that got our high school gym floor package, a final floor. And they do lots of major floor work. And they came in and walked it with us and laid out an example of what we could do. Our plan was to shift this court over a couple of feet, creating a, an extra foot on each three-point line. Re, you know, sand everything down, repair any, any issues with the wood or things like that. And then build the backup, re-stain it, paint it, do a stained three-point area like that. Re-center everything with the volleyball court. We'll move the sleeves over just a little bit to make that adjustment work. We'll have new backboards and hanging equipment, rims with that. And, um, and then what we'll do, we work with Farm and the Farm, Farnum, the bleacher company. And they'll be able to lock back those bleachers one section, so we can move everything over. And basically displace it just a little bit to create a better performance court for the students at Middle School West.
There is an issue with the wood, right?
There has been an issue with the wood and they, they evaluated it and I think we're gonna take a look at it when we're there. If you go there, it has.
We've drilled into it more than, yeah.
It's a, it's a strange phenomenon because it's such an old gym that it's done that. So when they're breaking that down, we are gonna try to see if there's a way to provide some relief. I don't know if it's some separation joints or something like that, but that'll be evaluated with it. But that challenge probably isn't completely addressed because it won't be a new gym floor. And we couldn't afford to put in a new gym floor, but what we can do is, is do this upgrade at roughly fifty thousand dollars with all new equipment. But the floor itself, we can do for under twenty-five.
What is a new gym floor?
Well, like replacing wood and everything like that, it would be hard to say, like, I mean, over a hundred thousand, yeah, two hundred thousand. Probably to have a court system.
Including the demo of the existing and installation up to the year two hundred.
So. That was, we ran it by Middle School West. In the center, you'll see that, that logo, familiar logo. But if we do create a new logo, um, the, the company will give us to like make one, to submit whatever we wanna put in the middle. And then if, if we don't really feel like we have anything, we're gonna work with Middle School West to, whether they would wanna put a W or whatever. We, we all agree we wanna work in the center court there. Or maybe a solid color or something like that, but to give it a little bit of life. And I would say last but not least, but probably not as exciting as everything else. This is some of the diagram with the High Point Elementary work. So we've worked with CORDA, Dan Bayrou is a local community member and he's an engineer for them and he's been great to work with. And he's helped us with this design. And what we'll be doing is probably working on a bid package that you'll see in the upcoming ones related to this. And that is.
Can I ask you a question? Going back to, I guess it's slide nine, or just maybe it's more general with like the hitting facility. I really like Kara's request and like, you know, we need to prioritize things, here's some things that we can let go of. But like, I guess my concern is like what that looks like when we're prioritizing things? And I, and I guess what I'm saying is like, one of the examples you gave was like, well, maybe we won't go back and reseal this. And like, maybe that's not like, you know, that big of a deal, but I guess my question is like, then what is that long-term? Like, did we end up like half doing a project and now in the long run, you know, we gotta go back and fix that part name because we didn't bother to reseal it, even though it didn't seem like that big of a deal? So I guess when we're thinking about prioritizing things, I guess, in my mind, I'm imagining a weird little asterisk that's like, hey, this doesn't sound like that big of a deal. But if we don't handle this, then in the long run, we're gonna have to come back and redo something like that. And I, I mean, I'm sure there could be a lot, I guess I'm looking for the outliers and kind of the leveling of the conversation.
In, in the past, Megan, I, I had implemented a facility database where I was at before. And we had evaluated every element of every building and every site that we had. It had life expectancy associated with it, it had prioritization and it had risks. So you, you kind of rate what your priorities are. It's hard to do everything that needs to be done, but like you said, there, there's gotta be a way to cut through that to say whether or not we feel good about proceeding with our decisions. And so what I can do is try to create more of a, almost like a stoplight kind of yellow, red, green analysis to say, if we're looking at these things that are high on our priority based on work orders. We have mechanical contractors who work with us often, they would identify some pieces that might be in need of replacement or repair, things like that. So we could assemble a list of things and say, this is probably something we need to be evaluating in the near, near future. And then here, here's how we would rate this and recommend it. And this is where things could fit into place for a decision.
That'd be a big help, thank you.
Sure.
It's also nice to know that our last payment on the PI anticipation loan that was taken out after we passed the first PI in twenty fifteen, twenty fourteen, and the debt was taken out in twenty fifteen, is this June first, right? So seven hundred and ninety-five thousand dollars plus interest that had been coming out every year to, to, for debt service. Doesn't have to come out anymore. So we will have the benefit of more funds, more funds from our PI. Right?
Right.
So that's good news going forward. It was always hard to have to carve out eight hundred thousand dollars right off the top to pay the debt. So nice to have the full amount.
And speaking of PI, I, I wanna say, like, I'm, I gotta say, like, I'm constantly really appreciative of the thoughtfulness and the intent. And, you know, I used to custom design jewelry and make jewelry and you could tell a good quality piece by the attention to detail and not just like, you know, the, the surface, but every aspect and element. And I feel like you really do that, you stretch the dollar and we, you know, go through all these processes that are very thoughtful and thorough. And it was really gratifying to go to Middle School East and hear, you hear this every day, but, you know, it was great for me to hear the students just talking about their experience in expanded classrooms and saying things like, we can hear the teachers and we can move. And, you know, they have room and just, you know, the, the things that you don't think about or I didn't really realize, you know, that the impact that it has in so many ways and, uh, you know, with expanding classrooms to Jefferson Elementary and Chapel Field and Clark. And, um, you know, the paving to the driveways, that is a big deal and it is gonna make a big difference. And it raises morale and it eases the traffic flow and, um, you know, you always do that. Like you do that time and time again and, you know, it's hard spending all this money. And like I feel confident and, but, you know, we can always do better. But, you know, I just really appreciate the priorities that you put in the hauntings and, you know, like when you come up to a school, is there rust and, you know, the bricks are worn or chipped or like is it crisp and clean? And, you know, the civic engagement, again, I just wanna say that feels really special and that's exciting. Thank you, so.
Well, I think that's, just to add on to that a little bit, from when was the PI levy passed, two thousand and fourteen?
The first one was fourteen.
You have to think about in ten years, we're trying to make up for thirty years of work not being done. I think to kind of keep things in perspective to your point about upkeep and, I mean, I know the whole time my kids were in school, nothing was ever done and they, they came in in the middle of that cycle. So I mean, we're as a, as a district trying to catch up and continue to move forward and money's tight. So like, we're doing all the right things as far as prioritizing, but we have to understand that the need has been so great. And we're trying to balance all of those things at the same time. So it is nice to walk around all the buildings and see the improvements. And for some people that haven't been in the district, they don't have that history, you know, to understand. And I get it if they're coming from other districts and see, you know, for some of us that have lived here a long time, we see the great improvements, you know? And I think it's just something that we just always have to kind of keep in mind as far as where we've been and where we're going. Would we like it to be faster? Sure, you know, but we're trying to be very diligent about how we're getting there too.
But I think some of that is hindsight too, like, cause then we can look at some other districts and be like, oh, that looked like a good idea, but it really didn't work out. Cause I mean, that happens a lot, like you put in a facility and then you're like, oh, that's, that's not what we thought it was gonna be. Whether maintenance or like, you know, other questions like that. So I think some of that, you know, kind of gives us some space too to say, is that really what we want or was that really necessary?
Thank you.
Thanks for laying it all out.
Yeah, I, I, look, I like your plan in terms of like risk and prioritization. Cause I think that's where it helps us as a board make those important decisions.
And we have some reference information that we can use, you know, Turner has a construction index. And I have some other people that I've worked with that can kind of create some of this, I think, help us so that it's not just our, you know, making them up. We're kind of aligning them with whether it's ASR standards from the mechanical side or it's, you know, these different industry standards that are out there for us to estimate what needs to be done. And then our maintenance staff, those, those guys being out there in the buildings and Dwayne working with them to say, tell us what you're also seeing as a continuous problem, whether it's windows leaks, you know, all these things that are disruptive to learning that we want to, want to address.
And I think that's all gonna be wonderful and even what you've put together now to Dion's point is for our community to see what the work that we're focused on, what we're doing, but also the need that's there, so I think it's helpful.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Any last words? No?
Thank you.
Okay. We appreciate your report.
Thank you.
The second item on our agenda is the financial report and I will turn it over to Treasurer Varda for that.
Well, um, first time, this, this oughta be fun. So let, let me just quickly say that my philosophy, when I put a lot of financial reports over the year, they're, they're really, they're not for me, they're for the people reading them, not, and so. So I think maybe in this interim, we can talk about, is this the right structure? I, I, you know, as someone that's done this for a long time, I mean, I was surprised by the length. But, um, but if that's what the community needs, then I mean, that's, that's what it is. Cause most of them are, you run, push a button and run them. So I mean, they're not any hassle, other than me trying to figure out acrobat last night and putting it all together. But other than that, it was just kind of, it was kind of a learning experience. So, um, so if you wanna go to, to me, the, so this, first the highlights, let me, I did wanna point out, um, a couple of things. First of all, um, the, uh, which will show up in the variance too, but property tax revenue is a little behind. And that's just a matter of timing. Michelle was able to, we will have by the end of February, you're seven million behind in January, you'll be three million dollars ahead by the end of February. Because more, there are, uh, we, we've got like almost twenty-six million in advances in February. It's just the way the county collected taxes and distributed it, it really is nothing that we could have done. Expenditure's pretty, point one seven percent, that ain't bad at all. That's, that's, that's a pretty good projection. And so, so the balance is down seven, I mean, if you would've looked at the projected balance, it'd be around fifty million, but it's forty-three because of that property tax. There was a question about other revenue. Uh, I think that I, I saw, and I, I wanted to tell you about the, I think it was, someone was related to the TIF payments in the, in the, in lieu of taxes. So there's ten million, I think, in about other revenue, but, um, and most of it is TIF, which is about six point, I think I updated to six point two, and then interest. So I need to look a little bit more and see if there's any big, I don't think there's anything really big in that rest, but I wanna, I will look at that. On the TIF issue, um, I did, Baker Tilly gave me a report they did for the previous treasurer last, this time last year. And so then I, Chris, Chris Moore, Mr. Moore and I talked about it. All those figures were projected for, are portrayed in your five-year forecast. And so Scott actually put it, went in and, and then Chris makes sure that they match up. So we're, we're supposed to get another report sometime in February and, or early March. And then as we build the May forecast, we'll do the same process. I'll, I'll input them and then he'll check them to make sure they're right. So, so I think there was a question, were they in there and, and, and so it's, uh, it's, uh.
We've, we've just, what the question was, is that we've been significantly beating it on a regular basis.
So is there anything?
So as, as we look to build the next five-year forecast, just making sure now that we have a few years of history, like are we taking everything into account?
And then there's a, a new one in, it's a Jefferson Township, so that hasn't even started to yield revenue. So it won't be in the forecast until, you know, you start getting a little bit of revenue and then you can start kind of projecting.
Right.
Suddenly they started the building, as somebody told me, so. So anyways, um, the PI, this morning I had a great question, uh, is, why is it so low? And well, that's cause of the advances. We only got about two hundred and fifty thousand in revenue in the two PIs for January. And I'll, by Thursday night, I'll tell you the exact number, cause it's on that sheet with the stuff. So that'll go, if you had a negative balance at the end of. So that'll go, you had a negative balance at the end of December. So back to the positive. But you had a large expenditure in last month's financial report. So if you want to go to the variance report, it's the next one.
Oh, okay.
You have to go past the.
The.
Yeah. It's like 28, 25.
If I was to strongly recommend anything.
Could you take it out?
I would take that out. And on the variance, I would put a link to it on your website so that if the reader was a citizen, they could go look at it. So, yeah, can you make that a little better because I'm too old? Well, again, it's mostly, you really are in line with everything. I mean, I know that, I looked at the way that Scott has a seven-year, seven-year historical. I mean, I don't know, that seems long, but, but I'm not criticizing, I'm just saying. But we might look, but he's right on target, so .17% darn good. So that's, most people would really be happy for that. And the variance in revenue won't matter until the March 7th. So the March 31st report will be where we'll know what we're doing with real estate, which we, as we've heard, we expect it to be up. And then down at the bottom, there's the notes. And I do have a question about that. So in the notes, my style has been, like, there's one link at the bottom, August 23. Normally, in September 23, that note's gone because it was for August 2. And I don't know if there's a, is there, I'm asking, is there a reason why these notes are continued when they were explaining previous financial reports? I mean, if they're important, I mean, that's fine, it's easy to keep on there. But I've usually used the notes to say, the report you're looking at, here's what you got to be looking at. But is there a historical reason? I mean, I'm.
So I think in the past, he had a monthly column, set of columns. And so he would put like a little one or, you know, to follow up with the notes.
Okay, so do you want me to create a second page with the month? Because we could do that.
Do you want the month? No, I think.
Because it is, you're right, it's over to, on the spreadsheet, it's over to the right. But in the printing out of it, it's not set up to print.
Right. And so, I mean, I believe that once they are past the month of subject, then they could drop off, right? So that you don't read through them all the time, looking for the newest.
I did want to, the one thing nice is casino revenues done for the year. It was within $412, so that's pretty, that's pretty good estimating. I don't know enough about, because when I was last doing this, we didn't have casinos. So anyways, but, so that, you know, and that's one thing note, I should have noted. In the state, if you look at the school foundation, the, I went back and looked, the casino is actually added into the school foundation. So that's why if you went back to look at December, you were at 1.4 and you're January 1.7, and then we're going to be back to 1.4 in February. It's that casino revenue. So we won't have to worry about it dropping. That's just, so I would assume August would have been the same way. It would have had July, then August sometime. But, you know, it's a healthy, I mean, it's a good balance. And you start with the reserve, obviously, with $500,000.
And our variance for expenses is .17%.
That's pretty, that's really good.
That's really good, right? Have to talk to you all for managing expensive, right?
So. And so it's a good report. So that's all I have. Do you have questions?
I do not.
No? And again, if you have any, between now and Thursday, and you want to see something that's easily taken care of, I'll be here, I'll date Thursday. I would say two other things, just as, I don't know, eight, four, five, whatever it is. But Cliff mentioned it, I think there's a lot of opportunity. I think that one of the questions we had at the pre was about, are we going to hit the 8 million? I think there's 8.2, is that correct?
8.4.
8.4. After talking to Redtree, I'm comfortable that that number is, is easy, should be able to be paid.
And he's talking about the interest on the phase two.
And that's why I want to sit, why we want to sit down. We have a good handle on the spend down now. We have a lot of money coming due in the next 90 days. I think it's 170 million, if I remember right. So with the Fed, right now, I'm sort of, and I don't want to say chaos, but one minute they're going to drop it, one minute they're going to keep it. And so we want to make sure we plan it. So if either of those happen, we want to minimize our risk with any Fed cut. And I've worked with both Redtree and Mead, they're the two best. So you guys are, on both, you're operating and you're well-covered with the two best firms in the state.
Well, that's good.
Good to hear.
Like that, you're confident, yeah.
And just from a financial perspective, on Thursday night's board, we have all of the resolutions with regard to Board of Revision. So.
Yeah, I think there's 30 of them.
There's 30, right? So that is required by O R C now. And I did look up my majority of them. And like one in particular is currently on the books for 300,000, yet it sold for 1.7 million. So those are the reason that, right?
And it has to be 500,000 plus 10%.
Is that the difference requirement?
Yeah, that's the requirement. So if you had a $1 million property, and it was 1.5, then it obviously hits both, right? It's 500,000 more and it's more than 10%. If it's $10 million property, it doesn't hit it because it's not 10%. So that, when the legislature added, and that's the sub, I mean, the whole bill is the subject of litigation. And so nothing is going to happen with this until that court case is decided. But if you don't file it, you can't, if court is done favorable to the school district's case, then you'll be in line because it's one.
Okay.
We have to go through these steps.
You have to file or you can't, because you won't be allowed to go back.
Right, yeah. So I just noticed that and I didn't.
But we know that's going for the screening.
Yeah. So that was a major thing. And then there weren't any real major appropriation requests. So I think it's a pretty easy financial.
Yeah, there, yeah, the one is a correction of a 2021 error. And it's within two funds within the debt bond retirement. So there's not an over, you're just moving money within debt service.
They're not moving.
It's just in the wrong fund.
Wrong bucket.
Wrong bucket.
Wrong bucket in the right fund, right?
So that is just corrected. It's a big number, but it's a correction, 2.7 million.
Yeah. Any questions for Mr. Varda? Just another thing, do we have a motion to adjourn? Is it moved? And the second?
Last second, thank you.
Mrs. Moore?
Yes.
Mrs. Coe?
Yeah.
Mr. Manley?
Yes.
Mrs. Dimerly?
Yeah.
And Mrs. Moore?
Yes.